Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease, available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
It's February 11th, 2025, 6:00 PM. I call to meeting this order of the Select Board of the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, I note for the record that participating on the Select Board this evening is Bill Ramsey, who is participating remotely, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next, I believe we have approval minutes, and I don't think we have any minutes, or do we? I don't believe we have any minutes for this evening. So we will then move to the next item, which is to consider the agreement with APC Development Group, Inc., to repair the function hall wall at the South Shore Country Club. I believe we have Kevin Whale in here? There, umsaying, right in front of me. And next to you, David, your compatriot?
Yes.
Okay, so please, give us a presentation.
If I just, real quick, the original memo that was submitted to the Select Board, the funding was noted as capital.
Yes.
The correction to that memo is actually, the funding is actually going to be South Shore Country Club revenues and retained earnings. So just for the record.
Okay, so Kevin. Yeah, I can just talk about the wall. The wall is, needs to be replaced on the second floor, so we'll be rebuilding the, the structure on the second floor, which is in the Hingham Room. All the windows will be replaced, along with the wall being rebuilt. This has been necessitated due to some deterioration of the wall, where it just needs to be rebuilt. It's about 60, 70 years old, and there's been some bowing of the wall and what have you, so it's something that we have had a structural engineer look at, and we had Apex Structural Engineers do the redesign, and so what they recommended was to do a rebuild of the wall and put new windows in, so that's what we're doing. This is about a four-week construction, so we're hoping to get this done, since we have a wedding on March 23rd, and that's why I asked that they move this up a little bit, so we had the time to get that done. A meeting with APC, who was the low bidder at $307,097, and then the next lowest bidder was 364, so obviously we got a very competitive bid there from APC. APC, the town has done work with them previously. They did the maintenance building, which we were very happy with their work on the maintenance building that they built at the country club as well.
And who's going to be overseeing the work?
So I do have Chris Roddy from RMD, the architect, who did the bid documents along with David as well, and he has overseen the roofing work, and he'll oversee this work as well.
And if you could just review, what is the schedule for payments going out?
The payments, so it's a four-week project, so it is a quick turnaround. We put an end date for the contract to be April 30th, so you know, probably they'll probably get a payment pretty much when they're done at that point, because they won't probably submit a payment for the first month, so they'll probably be pretty much done, and it'll probably be one payment at that time, and we'll hold retainage for any punch item list that they have.
That was my next question, in terms of retainage.
Right. So there's some, there's retainage in the contract, and we'll hold that until we all pit punch list items are completed.
And will the bride and groom be giving them a bonus if they finish this early?
Yeah, I'm hoping. They're going to be in the bowling alley after party, hopefully they're not there for their wedding.
Liz, any questions?
I mean, it sounds like it's critical and needs to be done as soon as possible. Are there any other functions or the restaurant that's impacted by this?
No, so we've closed down during the turnover from Ironwood to, from Raphael's to Ironwood, we did make the stipulation that they would close down, and you know, we thought we'd have the contract done earlier, it's just how things, you know, go, so they shut down until like the 23rd, that's their first event.
Of March. Okay, got it. Okay, and I think, I saw it's time and materials, and then invoice monthly, so probably.
So let me clarify that, the restaurant is open?
Yes.
It's just the functions, the upper function space is closed down until March 23rd.
Got it, thank you for clarifying. Okay, no other question?
They are open for functions downstairs, and the restaurant is open as well.
And just adding to that, what I've heard and what I've experienced is very positive with the restaurant, so I think the transition went well, and folks are pleased with the service, with the food, and it was a great addition.
Yeah, and they've been a pleasure to work with, so I want to try to continue that relationship, get this work done, so make the, you know, make it look nicer, and continue to invest in the property.
Great.
Mr. Ramsey, any questions?
My only question is, Kevin, which wall is it? Is the wall between the restaurant and the hall, or is it the one overlooking the golf course?
It's the hall, it's the wall that overlooks the 18th green.
Yep.
So overlooking the golf course. As you know, there's only about probably five or six feet from that wall. The second floor canner leaves from the first floor by about five feet, and then there's a retaining wall, and then you look down onto the 18th green there, and I think that's part of the problem, that there's a little bit of rolling. So the engineer has, in his design, has done some more support to kind of keep that support beam, and done supports in the design to make sure that doesn't roll out, so this doesn't happen again.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, Bill, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
In terms of funding, am I correct, this is coming from the operating budget?
So I, this was, in my last year's budget, it was funded under capital. So hopefully we're, you know, we are having a good year, we're running significantly ahead of last year, so we'll probably be running, using country club revenues, but then whenever we don't have as far as a shortfall for this year, based on doing some of the capital improvements that we've done, we'll be using our fund balance that we have had over the last several years, that we've built up.
And that's not the town's fund balance?
That's, that's correct, retained earnings, I know.
Thank you.
It's, you know, yeah, we have like six names for that, so, so trying to use the right one, but yeah, retained earnings that we've had, and that's been certified by the state.
Any member of the public, comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with APC Development Group Incorporated to repair the function hall wall at the South Shore Country Club in an amount not to exceed $307,097.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, that's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Next item on the agenda is to consider a letter to Mast dot and the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding the Transportation Improvement Project, TIP, the year programming of the Route 3A Improvement Project. JR, are you with us?
I am with you, thank you, Joe. On February 7th, so a few days ago, we did receive a letter from, or an email rather, from the Boston Region MPO indicating that the Route 3A Improvement Project is scheduled to be reprogrammed on the TIP for TIP year 2027. And within the email-
So JR, that's a delay of one year?
That's a delay of one year, yes.
Okay.
So, within the email, this was largely done at the behest of Mast dot, and in particular, it was due to two fairly specific issues that came to the fore around the 75% design submission. And the result of those issues, both existing stormwater, as well as some concern about whether or not we would be able to get the right-of-way in order for approval in 2026, with respect to those two issues in particular, they were planning on moving us to the 2027 TIP. Now, we have been working very closely with the Mast dot project team, primarily Mast dot's project manager and the consultants, who prior to Mast dot taking over the project, they were our consultants, and we have prepared a letter that addresses each of the concerns and provides solutions that we believe should correct the anticipated delay and allow for us to stay on the 2026 TIP. Obviously, that isn't necessarily within our control, and we can't direct Mast dot to undertake actions, some of the actions that we think would benefit the project. However, we're hoping that if the town expresses itself, if our elected representation expresses itself directly to the administration, that we may have some traction and get, have a little bit better or more conducive working environment to moving the project forward expeditiously.
Thank you. Susan, did you want to, Susan Murphy, did you want to add anything?
No, I think, I think that JR kind of summarized the situation. I reviewed the draft letter earlier today, also consulted with Town Council John Coughlin. You know, it's subject to obviously review by this, this board, but if you have any, any questions regarding, excuse me, regarding kind of the big picture issues, I'm happy to respond to those questions.
Thank you. Judy Sneeth, I see you're there. Is there anything that you'd like to add? And if you could identify yourself in terms of your participation in the Route 3A project?
Yes, I am Judy Sneeth, I live at 89 North Street, and I'm the Chair of the Route 3A Task Force, which has been steering this project for at least seven years, probably a little bit longer than that, and the project actually was on the 2025 TIP to begin with, and dropped to 2026 during the pandemic, and now this is a second drop. The expense of the project is accelerating at tremendous rates, and so getting it done sooner will actually be a cost saving to the state and federal governments, which are paying for the project. It would be really sad to see it split shift off a year for these two reasons, which have been clearly added to the project beyond the 75% design, and as Susan outlined in the letter that she and JR put together with Tom Lachlan, are entirely manageable, so whatever help you can give, influence, exercise would be tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, anything that you'd like to ask?
Nothing to ask, I just want to echo what Judy said about the project dropping back. It's, you know, it's disappointing, to say the least, we, we have, you know, a great group of volunteers, like Judy said, have been working on this for seven years. Costs, costs are accelerating, duly noted there, but also a lot of what we're trying to do at the harbor is, is connected to this project, and with each delay means we don't get the ability to do things down, done at the harbor, so whatever we can do to keep it on track, I mean, I don't know if we need to get our legislators involved, if that would help, but I 100% agree with, with the comments Judy made, we need to keep this thing. It already, it's already bumped one year, and we need to do everything we can to not let it bump again.
Just, Bill, I'm sure you know that we do have both our state senator and our state rep involved, and they're, they are participating to try to keep this on track, so I'm glad you raised that. Yep, Liz.
Yes, thank you for everyone's help in, in trying to expedite this. I certainly agree, whatever we can do to remove obstacles and, and support this moving forward. Judy, has the, the task force met and discussed this?
No, we haven't, this was a late development, and we have not met. Deirdre Anderson, I believe, is here tonight, she is a member of the task force, and there, there's certainly been made aware of it, but we have not, we have not had a meeting about it, and I guess my question for you all tonight is kind of, how do you see this moving, this letter moving forward? Who, who's in touch with the representative and the senator? And there's an MPO meeting on Thursday, who will represent us there, and how can we support this process?
So I've been in touch with JR and, and with Susan Murphy, I've spoken to Joe Moschino about it, and Art, are you involved in this meeting as well? So there's a meeting coming up on Thursday, there's active discussions going on tomorrow that I'll be participating in, and I think the wrinkle that this letter is intended to address, as you noted, came up rather recently, and so this board is going to move expeditiously, and I'll be coordinating Judy with you, just to make sure that we're, we all are in tandem here.
Joe, I appreciate that very much, and we'll stay in touch, thank you.
Joe, if I may?
Please.
So one, one additional note that JR had given me earlier is that this meeting on Thursday, there's no final decisions being made, that this is a discussion of the draft tip, so the goal is to get this letter in, to be there at the beginning of the conversation, and then be able to carry that through. I'm not sure exactly how long the process takes before a final decision is made, so the goal is to get there on the front end and try to derail the plan to defer.
Yeah, just to follow up on Judy's point about the accelerated costs, what, what's the share of the cost between what state, what, what the burden, the state's going to carry and what we have to carry? JR, do you know that?
This, we built the town at this time is not responsible for any of the costs whatsoever. It's, the project is covered entirely within the state's budget. There may be, I'll call them, certain small add-ons at some point that we may discuss entering a non-participating agreement with the state, which means we would pay for upgrades within the project, but most of the things that we would have in the past paid for upgrades for, such as decorative posts for the signal, for the signal masks and masked arms, all of those things Mast dot is now picking up the cost on, and Mast dot will pick up the cost for the historic decorative lighting that is part of the project. So because there's, there, at this time, there is no anticipated cost to the town.
Bill, I would just add to that, that there's a consultant involved, and the state is paying those costs as well.
Thank you.
Any member of the public, questions or comments? Okay, so I know that this letter was just only recently received by the Select Board, and so I am going to propose a motion on this. I would move to authorize, to approve, start again, I make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign a letter to the Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding the Route 3A projects substantially in the form as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, thank you.
Thank you for the quick work on this. Thanks Judy, thanks Susan.
And thank you all for your cooperation, it's very much appreciated.
Thanks Chair.
Talk to you tomorrow, JR. Okay, moving on, to discussion and possible, possible votes on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. First item is Article Q, Town Election Voting Hours. We have Carol Falvey here, Town Clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I actually prefer the space upstairs, it's a little bit more cozier than down here.
So do I.
Yeah, I know.
It's far away.
So, I have before you a, an article to reduce the local town election hours by two hours on Saturday, and also to rename the name of Article 2 in its entirety. Going through this, I realized that the name of the article was Town Meeting, and noticed thereof, even though in Section 2, it talks all about election information for the Saturday election, so, in any event, let me read, since there was a last minute change to this, so that you make sure we all have the same information in front of us. So, will the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town, adopted March 13th, 1939, as heretofore amended as follows? By deleting the title of Article 2 in its entirety and replacing it with the following, Town Meeting and Elections in Notice Thereof, and by deleting the last sentence of Section 2 of Article 2 in its entirety and replacing it with the following, At any town election held on a Saturday, the polls will be opened at 8:00 AM and remain open until 6:00 PM, and at any town election held on a day other than Saturday, the polls shall be opened at 8:00 AM and remain open until 8:00 PM, or act on anything relating thereto. We don't anticipate the latter of that happening, but our, our, our local elections are established by bylaw, and those take place on a Saturday. So, that is my request for town meeting. I'll just give you a little background, so as you know, this is my fourth year in the position, and I've learned a lot, talked to a lot of people over the years, and certainly a year into it, we had the Votes Act, which was passed in June of 2022, and you've heard me say this so many times, but it ushered in no excuse early voting. Prior to that, there was only absentee voting, in which case you needed an excuse, you had to be out of town, you had to have a religious conflict on the day, et cetera. Absentee voting, so now, early voting has surpassed absentee voting, and it's very popular in, in the town. Approximately 50% for state elections vote that way, and by early voting, mainly by mail, some in person. In 2024, last year, for our town election, which was only the second time we had an election since the law was passed, 68% of voters voted that way. In fact, I think we had under 600 or 700 actually come and vote in person on our election last year. Granted, there were no contests, so it didn't draw a lot of people, but in any event, I started then talking to my peer communities to see, hey, like, what do you, what do you all do for your hours, and was surprised to see that there is, you know, quite a difference. Hanover, Hanover, Kingston, Marshfield, Norwell, Situate, and Cohasset, all have voting hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Certainly the bigger neighbors, Braintree, Weymouth, they follow the state hours, as does Little Hull, they're open at 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but we do have a lot of good company that, that are, I should say, that have established a precedent for a shorter voting day for a local election. Just to clarify, we're not talking about a state election, this is just for our local election. So with that, I then turned to our poll pads. So our poll pads, when I came into office, had been purchased just recently and had been used for town meeting. We started to deploy them in the local election in 2022, and have used them for all elections since then, and it gives us great information, gives us data, and I think I shared with you some of the charts showing sort of the surges in voting during the time. I don't know, Michelle, if you have that? And as you, you'll see, we have 2024, 2023, and 2022, and the numbers just precipitously drop off at the end of the day, at between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock. Let's see, so in 2024, we had between 6:00 and 8:00, we had just seven people per hour over, in, in each of the eight precincts. 2023, we did have more, we had about 20 per hour in each of those, in each of the eight precincts, and even in 2022, before early voting, we still had only about 16 people per hour in those, those last two hours. So then I said, what can we save in terms of money? Because, you know, it's a long day, and we're, we're spending a lot of money on paying various people, and the savings for the two hours comes up to, without utilities and any food allowances, we're at $2,874 for two hours, by shaving it off. And the people, just so you get a sense of who we're paying, we have my election workers, some of whom are in the audience, we have the wardens, we have a warden who's in charge of every precinct, we have a police sergeant or lieutenant at every, at every voting location, we have police officers, we have custodians at the school, we have town hall maintenance people that are involved, we have my assistant town clerk, Jennifer Donnelly, who's sitting behind me, and our senior clerk that I'm paying overtime rates, so most of these people, with the exception of the election workers, are all being paid overtime. So, with all of that said, I feel like now is the time, with our new early voting firmly in place, to reduce the hours by two hours, reduce the voting hours from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM on that Saturday. So that is my proposal. Questions?
Great, so, my initial reaction when I saw this was, well, what about the folks who are working? And then I realized we're talking about Saturdays, and then it occurred to me, if there is an eventuality when the, when we're talking about not Saturday, I wanted to make sure it was held open till 8:00, and so I appreciate your making that a combination, so that this reduction in hours only applies when, when we're talking about voting on a Saturday.
Certainly recognizing that there are people that work on Saturdays as well, I mean, it's, they do exist, but by and large.
Yes. Bill, questions?
I don't have any questions, you know, the data, I think the data seems to support this change, as Carol pointed, other towns are doing it, and the drop off is significant after 6:00, so I'd certainly defer to Carol on expertise on elections, so I'm in favor of it.
Liz?
Just a question, I know you said it's local elections only, so just to clarify, it would not apply to state or federal?
No, that, we're, we are under the law, state law for those elections, so it's just our town election.
Okay, and the, our neighboring towns that have the reduced hours, have they seen a drop off in voter turnout?
I have not asked them that question, so I, I'm happy to reach out and get back to you on it.
Okay.
I suspect, I can't answer- I suspect, I, I can't answer it. I suspect not, because now there are so many other options for people to vote.
Yes, and the data seems to support this proposal. I guess I would just open it up to see if people have concerns. In theory, I would never want to reduce hours or accessibility to voting, and certainly encourage strong voter turnout. So curious if, if anyone has concerns with this, members of the public.
So Carol, have you reached out to members of the public in terms of their reaction to having the voting hours?
I have not. I have not, only simply because so many people vote by mail, that I think that, you know, and I've spoken to Eileen McCracken, and she said that she actually had proposed this several times over the years, but she and I discussed, the difference being, now we have early voting, and we also now have a few years under our belt where we see that people are voting, they're taking advantage of that. People just find it convenient, easy, sometimes they don't like crowds, they don't want to deal with whatever, and it's just, to be able to do it in the privacy of their home, they really appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a great option.
So are there members of the public with comments on this proposal? I am seeing none. What is the timing on when we would need to approve this?
It would not apply to this year, would it? If, if it was to pass at Town Meeting, so, I mean, I assume you would take a vote.
Right.
I know I'm before AdCom in two weeks. It would not take a place until the next, our next fiscal year, so it would be a year from now.
Yep. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable, I think you've done the homework, and you've demonstrated cost savings. I think, you know, perhaps implicit or explicit, what Liz was suggesting is some sort of public outreach is to make sure that, that there's not a segment of the population that we're missing that would react. So if we could, has this been pushed out on the town email, or any, any way going out to the community?
Not yet.
So if we were to do that?
We could prior to the AdCom meeting and Town Meeting, certainly, I mean, people always have the option to vote against it.
So we have a, a, we will have another meeting this month where we can vote on this. And I would just say, in the interim, let's, let's push it out and see if there's comment. And barring, barring none, I think this is going to be a positive reaction from this board. So I would prefer that we just defer this, we get it out on the email, do a blast, and make sure that, again, we're not missing any, any demographic here.
Sure.
Okay. Great, so then we will move on to Article O, which is the Specialized Energy Code.
Evening everyone, Brad Moyer here, 36 Wanderers Drive. Yep, sorry, I'm on Zoom tonight.
I'm looking at the audience for you, I didn't see you, sorry. So please, we, we've had, we had an extended, the Select Board had an extended discussion on this before, and I think you gave a, a excellent explanation, not only as to what this proposal is, but in terms of where we are now, what we've previously adopted. Perhaps if you could just give us a quick synopsis on that?
Sure, absolutely. So the Specialized Energy Code, also known as the Municipal Opt-In Specialized Code, is the latest building code put out by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. We have already adopted the stretch code back in 2018 as part of the Green Communities Program. This is the next level on top of that, it's kind of a pyramid structure where this sits on top of the stretch code, and it applies to new construction only. And it essentially seeks that new construction be effectively wired for electric use. We think of this as a customer protection kind of a code, because as we move increasingly to electrified appliances, HVAC systems, and so forth, any new construction while having the option under the code for going with a fossil fuel based system, this would just say pre-wire now for full electrification, so much easier and cheaper to do it during the new construction phase than to try to do a retrofit later down the line. So we see this as a, as a benefit to doing it now, encouraging all electric systems, but allowing mixed fossil fuel use systems. And that works towards our goal of achieving a net zero carbon future by 2040, which has been established in our Climate Action Plan. And our Climate Action Plan has one of its recommendations, the adoption of the Specialized Code.
Have you done any outreach or had communications with developers, builders, about whether this would have an adverse impact on their willingness to, to do new construction projects in Hingham?
So the outreach we've done so far has been, of course, to this body multiple occasions with Michael Clancy, we asked his view on that. We had a public engagement session back in November where we asked and reached out to developers also to attend. We've also done public mailings and outreach to our listeners. So we're always trying to reach those communities and have an open door for them, so we'll continue to do that outreach out. But so far, we've heard really no objections from any of these constituencies in the time that we've been promoting this.
I mean, what I've heard is that basically the hard work was the stretch code, and that's behind us now.
Correct.
And so the Specialized Energy Code really is forward looking, dealing with new construction, and it's making sure that we're, that we're prepared to be energy efficient.
That's correct.
Anything else you wanted to add?
The only thing I would note is the warrant article in front of you has been reviewed with Town Council. These are largely formulaic because they are building codes, so it mirrors what the Mass D U R requires. There is in there a recommendation effective date of January 1st of 2026. The D U R usually recommends either July 1st or January 1st effective date, so we figured January 1st of 2026 would give sufficient time for the Michael Clancy to prepare his team for it, as well as the development community to be on notice and aware of the changes.
Yes, thank you. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, I've been in support of this since Brad and I talked about it, I think in August. So I think it's good for our community to make this move. It's important for our environment to do everything we can locally, and I've looked at the, the draft a couple of times, I see nothing but positives with it, so I fully support it.
Liz.
Thank you, and thank you Brad for all your work on this. I agree, it's very much aligned with our Climate Action Plan and our goals as a, as a community. I appreciate the outreach that you've done, I think that's been really important. I know Art has worked with our developers and, and some of our commercial partners as well, so appreciate that. Some of the questions in the previous meeting were about, you know, how will they react? And will this stall economic development, which obviously is a priority of ours as well? So I feel comfortable moving forward with this and appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just note too, that outreach does not end tonight, where it'll kick off even more. So we'll be, we'll be working very hard before that Town Meeting date to make sure everyone is aware and has an opportunity to express a view.
Thank you. Art, is there anything you wanted to add?
We've been part of many conversations, there really isn't much to add. Thank you.
Great. Any member of the public, comments or questions? This is on Article O, the Specialized Energy Code. I am, I'm seeing none. Brad, I've, I've looked at this, I've had discussions with Art, and I've had discussions that we've had in public with your group, and I really appreciate the thought that's gone into this, and how this town has moved forward on an iterative basis, just to make sure that we are not disruptive, but we're making forward progress. And this really is, is the right next step, so I am also in favor. Where? John, sorry, did you have a, a comment or question here?
Oh yes, just, just quickly, can you hear me?
We do.
Yeah, good, good evening, John Borger, 53 Lafayette Avenue. Just a minor footnote to what Brad said. This is important also because it's a prerequisite for our becoming part of the Climate Leaders Program, which I think everyone that we've talked with thinks is a good idea. And I think you were briefed on that by Lisa Sullivan back in November. So one more reason why this is a, a good idea, and we're really heartened to have the Select Board's endorsement, and thank you.
Absolutely, great. So I am prepared to take a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article O.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time and support.
Thank you.
We now move to Article P, which is a citizen petition for a home roll petition, a liquor license to Hingham Gas. And it's Jenny, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing your name right, is Merhesh?
Yes.
Oh yeah, please, I'm sorry. I'm looking up there for you, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Merhesh, and I'm the owner of Hingham Gas, along with my husband, Bill Merhesh, and it's a new gas.
Just give you your residence address, please.
My residence address is in South Waymouth at 50 Wayfair Path.
Thank you.
In South Waymouth. And Mr. Bill Brett filed this citizen petition on our behalf. He's a good customer and friend of ours, and lives in Hingham. And we are trying to get a package store license for our newly constructed store. We've been there for about a year and a half now. If anybody doesn't know where we are, we're right in front of Scarlet Oak. And we built a very big store, and we're looking to get the package store license to sell beer and wine. We're already equipped with the refrigerator, with the locks and keys, and we're just looking for the town approval to go forward with it. We know that there's no more licenses available, and I have reached out also to the state, and they told me that if we go through the Town Meeting and everything, and we get approved from here, that they would help us with special legislator, and hopefully we'll be able to get it.
Is this a store, is it a gas station?
Both. So we have a gas station with a big convenience store.
So this would be having a gas station selling liquor?
Yes and no. So the gas station, most of the people pay at the pump, but we, we do own both. And the convenience store, we have our convenience store customers that come in.
How's, how's, how's the, the store and gas station doing otherwise? Is it in compliance with all other town regulations?
Yes.
Do you know if there are other gas stations in Hingham that are also selling liquor?
I do not know.
Thank you. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there are other gas stations that sell liquor. I don't believe that there are, but, but Tom know that?
I don't believe there are either, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, not right now.
Okay, Liz?
Um, I, well, I guess my only question to the, my Select Board members is, just wanting to think about this holistically, if, with the economic development in town, if we wanted to think about potentially additional liquor licenses, that may be something we want to think through. I'm less comfortable with a, a citizen petition for a specific store. I'd, I'd want us to have more of a plan for the town before going forward.
In other words, a plan for, if, if we need more licenses to have it scoped up, scoped out by this board rather than an individual applicant?
Exactly.
In terms of the individual applicant, Tom, have you looked at whether or not there's compliance issues here?
I spoke with the, so it's not this store, but Jenny, I believe you own another store in town, is that right?
Yes.
I spoke with the Board of Health today, and they let me know that Ms. Merhesh in that store, not this location, the other location, has had a couple of violations of tobacco sales rules. They're on their, I believe, third violation, and they're under a fine and a 30-day tobacco sale restriction for that store.
Which sort of goes to my mind to the question of as, as to whether or not we should have a petition for a particular location, rather than, as Liz is suggesting, for, if we're going to have liquor licenses, that there should be a plan that this board adopts.
The reason I had worded it like this, I had spoken to Town Council, and he helped me with this warrant article language. And if you were to put it out there, just this one license to anybody, it would be up for grabs for anybody.
Right, exactly.
And it wouldn't be fair to anybody either. I'm looking for it for myself, and anybody who else is looking for it for themselves should be doing the same thing. I was also told by the Select Board that the licenses come out per the census every 10 years. So we will not have a chance until 2030, depending on how many more citizens and if they were gonna grant additional licenses at that time. And that's still like another five, six years from now. So we're just hoping to get it now. We're a small business, and we're struggling, we have a very big mortgage, plus, in, in addition to filing this petition that I needed to get the 10 signatures, plus, I have also got 100 signatures, not only from Hingham residents, but from Norwell residents and other residences. There are other liquor stores close by, including the Big Y, but if you're traveling this way, going, let's say, towards the Derby Street Shops, it's just easier for the people to stop in and out. We have a very large parking lot, we also have all the snacks and different things that could go along with beer and wine. And a lot of customers ask us, how come we don't carry it?
But it sounds like it would be a change for this town if there are no other stations, gas stations that are, that have liquor licenses.
I don't think there are any other gas stations that have such large stores. My store is bigger than Cumberland Farms, it's almost like a mini supermarket. And you, I don't think you can sell beer and wine, like in the small kiosks, like the other gas stations that are around, or even my other gas station at Derby Street Shops, the snack shop is half the size of this floor right here, so I could never sell beer and wine in there.
Any members of the public, comments or questions here? So I'll just give you my reaction, which is, the town that's allocated, as you know, a certain number of liquor licenses. And my preference would be to have, if we get an additional license, or more than one additional license, to have that be part of a plan that this, this board adopts, rather than in response to individual applicants. And then there's the additional issue that, social issue that I think we need to address in terms of having liquor sold at, at gas stations, which at this point, I'm not prepared to, to move forward on. Liz or Bill, any further comments?
Yeah, so I mean, I think you make a good point. When we, when we put forward the brewery article last, last year for Town Meeting, we did get a lot of pushback from the Board of Health, there was concerns there. So I, your concern about additional liquor licenses in town was definitely, they didn't speak to the specific article, but they definitely had concerns last year when we proposed something similar.
Yep, I think that's right. So at this point, I will ask Bill or Liz if either one of them is prepared to make a motion on this, or whether or not you're not going to make a motion on this, Liz or Bill? Is there anyone making a motion?
So procedurally, we could make a no act, a recommendation for no action, but then it's still in part of the warrant, correct?
That's right. But if there is no motion, then there's, there's simply no motion on, on, on the article. And, and the board would not be moving forward on it.
And it would not be included, or it's still included?
No, so you don't have the authority to remove it from, from the warrant?
Right.
So if you want to have a no vote, you could take no vote, or you could have a negative vote if you choose to do that.
Tom, I mean, it would still go to advisory, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, yep.
Ultimately, advisory would weigh in on it as well.
Right. So I guess I, what I'm hearing is the alternatives would be either favorable action or no action.
That's right.
So Bill or Liz, will either of you make either motion here?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend no action on Article P.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So at this point, it will be taken up by Advisory Committee.
So do I have to do anything further, follow up with them, or?
The Advisory Committee will, will schedule a hearing similar to this-
Okay.
-for their board, and then their recommendation will be printed in the warrant along with the Select Board's recommendation and sent to town meeting in April.
Okay. And I'll be contacted about all of this, as I was for this?
Yep. I'll, I'll speak with the chair and AdCom, and we'll make sure that happens.
This is my first time, so I don't know how it works.
So when it's scheduled, you'll be notified.
Great. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
That's a public meeting, and you can attend as well.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move to a joint session with the Community Preservation Committee and the Advisory Committee. So we'll take a two-minute recess as they come up to the table. Okay, we will resume the meeting. I'll first turn to the Advisory Committee to call their meeting to order, unless you've already been called to order, in which case you can just open up your meeting.
We have not. We will adopt the same language you used earlier for your meeting, and I'll call this meeting of the Advisory Committee to order.
Do you need to identify the members of your group that are participating?
I haven't historically. Would you like me to?
For hybrid meetings, that is the recommended approach.
Well, then let me get right on that. Meeting of the Advisory Committee, I'm going to recognize our members who are in attendance. We have Ted Seokis, Brenda Black. We have, s, sorry. Steve, oh, sorry. We have Joe Griffin. We have Steve Paul, Alan McDonald, Kevin Freitag, myself, Tina Sherwood, Carol Tully, Jerry Seeland, Dave Leapart, John Germain, Brian Stack, and Elaine Cusker. And online, we have Kathy Curley.
Thank you, Tina. And now I will turn to CPC. Do you have a quorum that you are?
No, we don't have a quorum.
Okay. Then we will begin for a discussion of possible warrant articles from CPC.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Julie Straley. I live at 231 Lovett Street, and I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So I'm here tonight to present the projects that the Community Preservation Committee is recommending to town meeting in the form of what you call Article M now. So under the Community Preservation Act, a CPC's charge is to make a recommendation to annual town meeting on spending of CPA funds. To that end, our committee's nine members have been meeting since September to review preliminary and final applications to make final recommendations. So we had seven CPC meetings and then attended a Recreation Commission meeting as well. So it was great work by the committee, and I'm pleased to present the projects to you tonight. First, I just want to give you a quick review about what the Community Preservation Act is for anyone who doesn't know. The CPA was enacted by the Massachusetts Legislature in 2000, approved by Hingham in 2001. It's a state law to help communities preserve open space and historic sites, create affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. Hingham's first grants were voted by annual town meeting in 2003. The rules and oversight are conducted by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. CPA funds and its sources are completely separate from Hingham's operating budget. So the community preservation funding is a combination of 1.5% surcharge on Hingham real estate tax levy against real property, plus a distribution from the Commonwealth's Community Preservation Trust Fund. So in recent years, that distribution from the state has been only an 18% distribution. As communities have adopted the CPA over the years, we started out at 100% grant matching, and it's now a much smaller number from the state. And this is generated by a surcharge placed on all real estate transactions at the state's Registry of Deeds. So community preservation funding is broken into four categories: open space, affordable housing, historic preservation, and recreation, which is a subset of open space. And there are minimum distribution requirements of 10% of the annual budget across three categories: open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. If there's a large request in a year that has deemed incredibly important and timely for the CPC to act upon, the CPC has the ability to ask annual town meeting to approve borrowing to help pay for a project. So future CPA budgets will include debt service to pay back that borrowing for that project. So this year, we have a project that we have, have to set aside funds for that we've been paying off for a number of years. That's from annual town meeting 2016, the purchase of 49-plus acres of land off of South Pleasant Street. That was a purchase for $5 million, referred to as the Lainer Property. The CPC borrowed $4.5 million to acquire that land, and the debt schedule is due to complete in 2037. We're on a, that debt has been bonded, so we are on a fixed schedule of payments. So we can't pay more than what is on the schedule anymore. We just make a fixed payment each year. And then examples of the two other projects that have been financed by borrowing against future community preservation funds, that's the Benjamin Lincoln House purchase in 2020 and the Hingham Heritage Museum in 2013. Both of those projects are paid off. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to show you a breakdown of the funding and how we got there for this year. I'll cut to the chase. The budget is $2.45 million, and what that comes from is the 1.5% surcharge, which is Our state match from the CPA Trust Fund at 18% is $264,363. But then we also had surplus and some holdovers from last year that were unspent. So we had $209,404 that were just general funds that we did not spend last year in our budget. We also had to set aside a minimum 10% from the historic category of $185,783, because we didn't have any historic applications last year. And we had to set aside 10% in the housing category of $185,783. And then we also had unspent funds from a past allocation in the administrative fund of $44,194. So that's how we got our total for this year. And then just to show you that we do have these 10% minimums that we have to spend each year, or at least earmark and set aside to spend in a future year, and to calculate that 10% minimum this year or each year, you take the local surcharge and you add the state grant funds. You don't take into account any money that you've held over from previous years. So this year, the minimum allocation across those three categories is $182,965. So at the beginning of our process in September, and then into October, when we got our final applications, we had five applications totaling a request of $4,152,320. So that far exceeded our budget. But we went ahead through the process, and I just wanted to note that we have a minimum payment that we have to make, again, on our debt for the Lainer land purchase, and that's Next slide, please. So I have a list of the projects that were the final applications, including our debt payment and then the administrative fund at the top, and then the dollar amount that was requested and that what our final vote was. So I'm just gonna run through that quickly, and then I'll go to each slide. We'll have each project I'll break out. So number one, the administrative fund, I'll go over this more in a minute, but that request is for $40,000. Then we have the Lainer debt payment. Then we had an application for purchasing six and a half acres of land where Charles Street meets LaZelle Street, and that request was for $1.8 million, and the CPC did not recommend to make that purchase. And the Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund, the request was $500,000, and the CPC chose to recommend $700,000, which I'll go through with you in a minute why. And then we have the old ordinary campus improvements from the Hingham Historical Society, that is $600,000. And then finally, pickleball courts, $758,640. So our final vote was $2,307,819, with a surplus that we can roll over into next year or spend down the road is $146,996, and that's just general funds. It's not earmarked for anything or any specific category. Next slide, please. So this is really small print, and it's not meant for you to read, but it's just, I want to show you that the CPC article, which I wrote Article L, it's actually, you're calling it Article M right now, I made a mistake. But anyway, there's six sections to it. So I already went through that there are three projects that we're recommending, but we also have at the top, the administrative fund. Then we have the next down, the debt payment. And finally, at the bottom, it's just a cleanup, legal issue cleanup to do with the Affordable Housing Trust that I will go over with you in a minute. So I just wanted to show you that there are six projects to approve as part of this article. So next up, again, we have the administrative fund and the debt payment. So the Community Preservation Act allows communities to spend up to 5% of their budget each year on fees associated with administering this Community Preservation Act. So the request this year is $40,000, which is 2% of our budget, of the budget. And the membership fees to, we're spending that money on membership fees to the Community Preservation Coalition, and it's an organization which provides consulting services to the Community Preservation Committee. And other expenses, we pay a portion of the salary of our administrative assistant who works in the planning department. We also pay legal fees to, when we contact town council about determination of eligibility, grant agreements, language on any preservation restrictions. We're able to pay our own legal bills so that it doesn't have to be in the general legal budget. So that's the admin fund. And then the second part is the debt payment for the Lainer property. Again, CPC has to make a payment. The, the language is to appropriate a sum of money, of money, in the amount of $209,179, nine dollars from the Community Preservation General Fund, to be available for expenditure by the Select Board for the payment of bonds or notes borrowed for community preservation projects. So it's just asking town meeting to authorize Select Board to make the payment that's due this year.
Julie, I'm just gonna stop right there, because you've got a number of items here.
Yep.
And just see if there's any questions up till now, because then we're gonna go to specific projects.
Sure.
So I've reviewed this, and I'm comfortable with, with these two items. I'll ask Bill and Liz if you've got any questions. Bill?
I have no questions for now. I have questions about the specific projects. Thank you.
Liz?
Yeah, no questions, but thank you, Julie, for all you've done to get this so organized.
Sure. No problem.
Tina?
AdCom.
You wanna see if anyone on AdCom has questions up till now?
Anyone on Advisory have questions up till now? I think we're good for now.
Great. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, I have the first application that we're gonna go through, which is the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, the Opportunity Fund. So the mission statement of the Affordable Housing Trust is to preserve affordable housing through a variety of means benefiting current homeowners and potential new residents, to propose, support, and develop affordable housing that contributes positively to the character of the town, considering both Hingham's history and its future, and finally, to educate and advocate with the goal of promoting the diversity of Hingham's population. So the trust was created in 2007. The town's master plan from 2021 identified housing affordability as one of the town's seven priority areas, and specifically set as the trust's development goal, adding five new affordable housing units to the town's housing stock each year over 10 years, for a total of 50 units by 2031. So the community preservation funds are the trust's primary recurring revenue source. To meet anticipated spending and maintain balance for opportunities, the Affordable Housing Trust uses the funding to purchase properties, to apply for an affordability restriction from the Commonwealth's Department of Housing and Community Development, improves the properties, and then sells them as affordable homes. So the trust's work over the last several years has enabled it to convey six affordable homes, four single-family homes, and a duplex to new homeowners. The trust also currently owns a single-family home and two recently acquired condominiums that it will soon be renovating. It will also be exploring the potential for developing two additional homes on land owned by the trust or the town. In addition to its efforts to provide affordable single-family homes, the trust also will need to complete at least one multifamily affordable development, if it is to come close to meeting the master plan goal. So the trust has been in discussions about a possible opportunity that might happen over the next 18 months. So the CPC appreciates the trust, their excellent reporting on their plan and their finances, and I'll note that the trust also presents annually to the Select Board and the Advisory Committee on its work. So the request is for $500,000. The CPA, CPC recommended $700,000. This is because the trust did not apply for CPA funds last year, and before that, received $735,000 at April 2023 town meeting. So since the Affordable Housing Trust did not receive any funding last year, and their preliminary application request this year was actually for $700,000, and then I think they realized the, the amount of competition in the field, so they went down to 500. But again, the Community Preservation Committee just decided that we'd like to recommend the original requested amount for this year, which is $700,000, because we had a surplus. I just want to note that in this article, there's language that allows the Affordable Housing Trust, when it sells a property, that it can take the net sale proceeds, and instead of that, those dollars coming back into the Community Preservation Fund, that they would go right back into the Affordable Housing Trust. And that will allow them to just keep using the money, moving forward, to buy the next property or do the next maintenance on a property. So we added language this year, so this, so this funding that we would, that if town meeting approves, that going forward in the future, net sale proceeds on those properties would go back into the Affordable Housing Trust. Now, in the future, the Community Preservation Committee could choose to not add that language. And then if the Affordable Housing Trust sells a property and CPC wants that money back into our general fund, we could choose to do that for whatever reasons. But that's just part of the language of this project this year. Are there any questions about that?
So I'll, I'll start. If they get the $700,000, do they have plans for that?
Yes, they do. Yeah, I had mentioned that they, what they are working on is they, they're renovating, they're planning to renovate two recently acquired condominiums. They're also, they have potential for developing two additional homes on land owned by the trust or the town. And then they're talking about this multifamily affordable development. And anything else? It's an opportunity fund, so if something comes up, they would be in a position, because they have funding in the trust, to be able to make a move quickly and be able to acquire a property.
Yeah, so my experience when I've attended some of those meetings is that opportunities do come up, and they need to be able to act rather promptly, particularly given the Hingham real estate market.
Yep.
So I think it makes sense. And my understanding is that the need was 700,000. They reduced it to be conservative and to increase the likelihood that they'd get something, but it turns out they did not need to be as conservative as their initial request was.
Yeah.
Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, and that the Community Preservation Committee felt that we had a surplus because we didn't fund all of the projects, and we, we felt strongly that this was a worthy place to put that extra $200,000, but then also have a little surplus for anything that might come up next year. It's a good project.
And I would also add that increased affordable housing enables this town to stay in compliance with 40B.
Yep.
And so there's a real benefit to the town in terms of being able to control our own zoning. So I, I salute the Housing Trust for their work and for your committee's work with this. Liz?
No questions on this one. I'm thrilled to see it going back to the original request, especially in light of them not receiving any funds last year. So we certainly know this is a priority for the town, and we have a housing shortage in a very competitive market, so it's critical that they are agile and can move quickly when an opportunity arises. So thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
I would just echo what Liz said. It's critical they move quickly. We've seen that just past year on a couple properties that came onto the market. So I mean, this is great. Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Tina?
Yeah, thank you, Julie. We had an excellent presentation by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust earlier this year, and I couldn't be more supportive of this. And I wanted to ask, are there any Advisory Committee members who have questions? And I wanted to ask, are there any advisory committee members who have questions or comments about this? All right, seeing none?
Hearing none, we move on.
Okay, next project is from the Hingham Historical Society. It's improvements to the Old Ordinary Campus. So most of you will recognize this beautiful, very old building in our town. And this project request is for $600,000 for the rehabilitation of this campus to improve tourism infrastructure at the historic Old Derby Campus, including accessible restrooms and a kitchenette in the House Museum, stabilize and renovate the annex, one of the outbuildings. The next slide will give you a better layout of the property, and accessible paths between the buildings. And to create accessible entrances to all three buildings, the house, the annex, and the fort. And the project will deliver improved visitor experience by improving safety, function, and convenience in time for Rev. 250 in 2025 and America's 250th birthday in 2026. This project supports the Town of Hingham master plan goals to honor town character, policy 1.4, which is heritage tourism, goal number five, to support a vibrant, resilient local economy, and policy 5.5 to promote Hingham as a destination. So on the next slide, thank you. So in the slide on your far right is Lincoln Street. So moving to the left in the pink is Phase 1, which is to renovate an underutilized workspace in the Old Ordinary House for long-term use as a handicap accessible restrooms and kitchenette. Then also construct accessible path from, to the restroom from parking. So the improved facilities serve the Old Ordinary and also the Benjamin Lincoln House, which is located across the street. Then in blue, the plan Phase 2, to create accessible entrances to all three buildings on the Old Ordinary Campus, which is the house in front, the annex in the back, and the fort, which is in the back but at the top, the little, the littlest building. And construct accessible paths to connect these buildings from a reconfigured parking area and improved landscape. And finally, on the far left in yellow, Phase 3 is to stabilize and update the annex building to serve as flexible education and function space and complete final landscaping. The Community Preservation Committee recommends a grant of $600,000. And I'd like to note that the Hingham Historical Society also received a $200,000 grant from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism for this project.
So this board had a presentation about this project before.
Oh, great.
We went over it in detail. I think each of us were impressed with the attention that was paid and the need for this, for this work. Do you know, and I believe I know the answer, I just want to confirm, that this has been reviewed by the Building Department in terms of the need for accessibility and that this was in compliance with, with codes?
Yes, so Deirdre Anderson here from the Historical Society, maybe she needs to give, help me with the details. But I know that, that, that because they have the grant from the Office of Tourism, that they've already started part of this, first part of the project, which is the part about the accessible bathroom. So I don't know if you want to add anything else, Deirdre, or I get that right?
Deirdre, is there anything you wanted to add?
If you want me to take that?
No, if, if you're good, we're fine. Okay. We've got a long night.
Yeah, so they, they're permitted and they, they've gone before boards, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bill, any questions?
No question. I would, I would echo my enthusiastic support for this project when we heard the presentation previously. It's a project that's going to benefit all generations of residents, young, in the middle, older. The Historical Society does such a wonderful job, just having such a big tent to involve so many people. So I think it's a great project for CPC to be funding.
Liz?
No questions. I think this project is very much aligned with our goals of historic, preserving culture, historic tourism, as well as accessibility. So thank you.
Tina?
Thank you so much for this. Do any of our advisory committee members have questions regarding the Old Ordinary Campus investments? Hearing none?
Okay. So I am going to skip over the next project, which is the pickleball project, just for one second, because I just want to get one administrative item out of the way, which is Section 6 of the warrant article. It's the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust appropriation. And so what this is, and this is the wording of this part of the article, what we just talked about, about net sale proceeds going back into the Affordable Housing Trust. There are two properties that are closing this year that it's just part of the last cleanup. You won't see this kind of question again where we want to make sure that the, when they close on these properties, that those, those funds will go back into the Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund. So this is the last cleanup. And if you, like I said, I talked about all of this in the earlier part of my presentation, but this is for two addresses, 21B Beals Cove Road and then 18K Beals Cove Road. So again, we had, we had this cleanup kind of piece of the article last year as well for some other addresses. And this should be the last time that you see this kind of cleanup in the CPC article.
And I think, I think we're all familiar with this. We, we're good.
Okay. All right. So I will get now to, back to our projects, which is the next one. And the final one is the Recreation Department and the pickleball courts. So the 2020 Athletic Field and Court Study conducted by Weston and Sampson, a consultant, concluded the Town of Hingham had the need to create dedicated pickleball courts. So annual town meeting in 2023, there was a community preservation grant for $55,000 to the Recreation Commission for a feasibility study and, and preliminary design of pickleball courts. So the current community preservation grant request is $758,640, which represents 40% of the total project cost to construct 12 new pickleball courts at the Carlson Field Complex. And I will note that, just because we're pointing to the master plan, that this satisfies Policy 6.3, provide a range of opportunities for recreational activities for all ages and abilities. So if you go to the next slide, we're going to zoom out and see a larger view of this project or the overall site plan. So on the far, far right of this picture, you see Fort Hill Street and the West Hingham Train Station. So you turn on to Bear Cove Drive, which is the big road, right, kind of in the middle of the slide. And you'll see in yellow, the proposed location where there's currently an abandoned building, which formerly contained the Traces Program from Hingham High School. It's a shop program. But now the building is condemned and there's no use for it. So on the bottom half of the picture, you can see that the proposed location is across the street from parking lot, basketball courts, skate park, and soccer fields complex and near the baseball and softball fields. And at the top of the picture, behind the courts is Hingham Municipal Light. That's uphill behind the courts. And then uphill to the right is the DPW and Sewer Department Facility. So during the CPC hearing process, the issue of pickleball noise came up. The consultant who conducted the feasibility study and recommended this location indicated that since the site was a significant distance to Abutters, with the nearest residence 700 feet away with a wooded buffer, that there were no expected noise concerns. However, the CPC requested the Recreation Department to commission a sound study, which was conducted by a consultant between November 24th and December 2nd. And when the results were ready, the Community Preservation Committee attended a Recreation Commission meeting with the sound consultant on January 7th to hear the review of the results. And then the CPC discussed the results at our own meeting on January 8th. The CPC was satisfied by the results of the sound study and the proposed mitigation plan, put up the screens around, and the CPC voted on its final recommended projects on January 15th. And I would note that the CPC and the Recreation Department during this process got some criticism for its, the lack of official notification to Abutters. So the Planning Department requirement for notification to Abutters is 300 feet. So the residences, being 700 feet away, didn't fit into the notification, official notification, notification process about this proposed location. We did get, Abutters were involved in the process, who spoke out on their concerns about the noise and possible traffic, and I do thank them for being part of the process. And I acknowledge that there are very rarely are community preservation applications that are building or creating a building or a site that's, when there's no activity or it was, nothing was there currently. So usually it's rebuilding or rehabilitating something. And I also acknowledge that the CPC and other committees involved should work on ways in the future to get input from residents that fall outside of that setback notification. So I wanted to invite Mark Thoreau, who is the, the head of the Recreation Department, and I don't know, Vicky, oh, and Vicky Donlin, Chair of Recreation Commission, because they, I just figured it would be instructive to go in further to the sound study and to give more information, because this was the biggest issue that came up during our hearing process about this project. So is that all right?
Sure.
So I, I put up for the next slide, it's just some of the results from the sound study. And I'll just flip it to you guys and.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Julie.
Yeah.
So Ascena Tech was the firm that was hired to perform the sound study at Carlson Field. First, Ascena Tech embedded two receivers at two different locations at the Carlson Complex, which recorded the ambient or background noise level. From November 24th to December 2nd, one receiver was at the edge of Conservatory Park and one receiver was placed near Adams Court. The background sound levels at location A, Adams Court, ranged from 35 to 59 decibels, with an average background sound of 44 decibels. The background sound levels at location B, Conservatory Park, ranged from 31 to 58 decibels, with an average background sound of 39 decibels. Ascena Tech developed an acoustic model of the pickleball court facility at the Carlson Complex site in the surrounding areas, including the residential properties to the northeast and south of the courts. The acoustic model has the ability to compute the sound levels transmitted from pickleball courts to these adjacent properties. Ascena Tech recommended two different sound mitigation strategies. Option 1 is an aggressive mitigation using 15-foot-high noise barriers around the east, west, and south sides of the proposed courts. Option 1 would impact significantly the cost in the arrangement of the facility. CHA recommended that we choose sound mitigation option 2, which provides 10-foot-high sound screens around the east, west, and south sides of the proposed courts. When Ascena Tech applied their acoustical model of the 12 pickleball courts and utilizing mitigation option 2, the decibel range at the five residents was a low of 19 and a high of 42. Option number 2 reduces the minimum sound levels by 1 to 10 decibels and the max sound level by 5 decibels at one of the residents. According to CHA, the sound study proved that pickleball courts more than 400 feet away produce very low noise levels compared, compared to the existing ambient noise. In other words, at the two receivers that recorded just the background noise, it recorded a range of 31 decibels to 59 decibels. This range is the background noise level without any pickleball and without any use for it operating at Carlson Complex. With mitigation option 2, there was that low of 19 decibels and a high of 42 decibels. And CHA tried to put these noise levels into perspective. So they listed ambient sound of a library, 40 to 48 decibels, normal conversation, 50 to 60 decibels, tennis, 52 to 58 decibels, pickleball is a little bit louder at 60 to 70 decibels, noisy restaurant, 80 to 85 decibels, and a snowmobile at 95 to 100 decibels. So CHA believes that the decibel with a high of 42 with that sound mitigation option number 2 is comparable to, comparable to the ambient noise of a library. That's kind of a high-level overview of the sound study.
Do you want to add anything, Vicky, or just stand by?
No, I would just add that the Recreation Commission has been basically giving out this information since the study was done in 2020. So it's been an ongoing process that we were, thought, everybody in town certainly was well aware of what we were doing. And the first anything came about was pretty much in December. And the minute, excuse me, November, and the moment we heard about it, we immediately decided to bring on the noise sounds, sound engineer and get this done. And we went with the most expensive firm. So I, I feel very confident that we got, hopefully, good, good dollars spent on, on this study. But I feel very confident that we did it in a manner that was transparent and, and to the best of our ability.
And we, we understand that noise is a very real issue with people have serious concerns over it. Throughout the pickleball study, this without question, kind of the most optimal location in Hingham for dedicated courts, the biggest factor being is that it sits the furthest away from the nearest resident.
The only thing I would add is that also everyone in the room certainly is familiar with Carlson Field, surrounded by woodland. So pickleball, not only is it at least 700 from any residents, it also is surrounded by woodland. So it shouldn't, that should also be another buffer that, that should be considered. And we've gone with the option 2 of putting up the sound screens.
Julie, anything else on this?
So that's it for pickleball. I just, I have a closing, thank you. But I don't know if you want me to close with.
You're not up to that yet.
Oh, wait, sorry, I'm not up to that. Okay, sorry. This is just a, the, the, sorry, thank you. The reworked cost estimate that the CPC funding request is $758,640. The total budgeted probable cost is $1,896,600. That includes demolition of the existing building, that they increased that amount in their budget as the process, process went on to get a more realistic dollar amount for the demolition part. And then adding the sound attenuation wind screens at $70,000. And I realize that that print is very small, but if anyone has any questions about that, I can help with that.
I think it's also worth saying that the Recreation Commission went for 40%, well-understanding that we needed to get a warrant article to go to the town for the 60%. So we don't want you to think we're only building 40% of a court. We're transparent about that.
There's a separate warrant article, but obviously you guys.
A separate warrant article, thank you.
So, so thank you. I mean, I, I know I've heard from residents that they want to play pickleball. And I've heard that there's a shortage of courts and that people are going out of town or they're trying to find someplace else. And there's, there's clearly a demand. And I think the Rec Department is responding in kind to, to what they're hearing. Let me ask, what sort of approvals are required in terms of permits or other permitting organizations? And to what extent have, has that process begun or at least been approached?
Yes, I've met several times with several different department heads with planning and conservation. The last meeting was today. And the message that I'm receiving is that the, the project is absolutely feasible at this parcel of land. But like any town project, if we were awarded the, the money at town meeting, we would have to navigate our way through the differing permitting boards, the Planning Department, Conservation, and potentially the, the design of the project could evolve as we have to meet any regulations that they have. But the message, overall message that I was receiving is that the project is, is feasible.
Just let me add, Joe.
Please, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that the word preliminary design, because we wanted people to see what a pickleball court would look like at Carlson Field, but this was a preliminary design. Nobody ever said this is the design. That's why we're going for design and construction for this project. And that's the way it needs to go.
So in other, so often you'd have an appropriation for design that would scope it out, figure out what the construction costs are, and then do a separate warrant article.
Correct. This is a design with cost estimate, as well as the feasibility study.
I mean, I've, I've been out at that location and I've. I mean, I've been out at that location, and I've seen wetlands, I've seen vernal pools. Have you, is this citing in a way to respect the lines that are, the setbacks that are required by the Conservation Commission?
We've had several discussions with Conservation, and we realize there are wetlands there that have to follow certain regulations, and the project and that design could evolve in part of the preliminary design project. CHA did also make another modification to the design to better adhere to those regulations and the setbacks that would be required by Conservation.
So would the pickleball courts be as large as what you're proposing here if you have to change to meet the setbacks? In other words, would there be fewer courts?
Potentially, yeah, as we get through the permitting process, potentially the 12 courts could get down to 10 courts if we had to, in order to meet the requirements.
And that arguably would then impact the construction costs?
It could, yes.
What about in terms of environmental assessments? I mean, some of the land back there is contaminated. Is any remediation included in your costs here?
Yes, with recent questions that have come up, we have moved forward with a Phase One environmental site assessment. Phase One ESA services are general in nature with the intent to evaluate a site's environmental conditions. In a sense, the potential liability for any contamination present at the site by means of a site inspection, records review, site contact interviews, in consideration of other relevant factors and information. So we're just waiting for signed agreements, but we will be moving forward with this to get, collect that data and information.
I guess what I'm asking is, does your budget include environmental remediation?
It does. We, on the demo budget, we believe that we have a, we have a quote from a construction company to demolish the building for $250,000, and you'll see on the estimate that the number that we used for demo is 465,000. So knowing that there's a huge X-factor with dealing with potential materials that are inside the building, that we wanted to build in some contingency to allow for material that we could find within the building envelope and perhaps even within the soil if we had to.
And let me just share, Joe, that this again evolved from original presentation to CPC due to the fact that we were watching as the country club started to get quotes on their demolition of the pool, as the Hingham Center for Active Living was getting quotes on a very, I don't want to say similar building, it's different, but certainly of that timing and in the same park. So we were very careful. I think we've got at least three quotes, all of which are lower than what we went to CPC with, because we didn't want to be short. So we're very confident that with the quotes we've gotten and with the information we've gotten from others who are demolishing similar, obviously a pool is not the same as a building, but the asbestos may be. So we wanted to be totally sure that we were covered.
Got it. Okay, Liz, any questions?
I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, everyone involved, and I know it's been over many years. And I know there's a great demand for pickleball courts. I think I would love to hear from the public and who's here on their concerns. I have not been in those meetings, hearing directly from the abutters. I appreciate Julie's comments about trying to include the abutters and more public earlier in the process, so look forward to the discussion.
Bill, any questions?
Thanks, Joe. My wife is a member of the Recreation Commission. She's actively worked on this project, so to avoid an appearance of a conflict, I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
So you can go home and get dinner, in other words.
Yes, otherwise I won't get any dinner.
Nina?
At this time, we're interested in hearing what you have to say and the public has to say. Steve is going to be the liaison for this article and may have a question. And we also will be having a hearing on the article ourselves, so.
Thanks, just one question. Julie did mention traffic, and I did attend the CPC meetings and one or two Rec Commission meetings, and there were some questions from abutters about traffic. I don't know if you're the right audience for the question, but I'm curious whether as part of building that, and at town meeting, we're going to have another article with another project in Bear Cove, whether there's any traffic study that comes with this.
As part of this project, there has been no traffic study done. If we get to that stage where if the planning board required that, certainly we would have to tackle that at that point, but for right now, there has not been a traffic study that's been done specific to the pickleball project.
And the only thing I could add to that is the fact that at this point, we've got six courts that are going on regularly at Cronin Field and six courts over at Plymouth River. We've never had a concern with traffic in either of those places, so this is very similar to that. We're only adding a few more courts to what is already being built somewhere else. Hopefully, those people will allow the tennis people to go back to playing tennis on those
Any other ad com questions at this time?
Just following up on Steve's question on traffic, what about parking? How will parking be handled for this project?
Part of the preliminary design includes a dedicated parking lot for those courts as well. So that'll be part of the project.
Michelle, I had a picture of, if you just want to see what it looks like. It's Carlson Complex One, right? Oh, yeah. It's on one of the slides.
Here we go.
Yeah, so that's our proposed idea.
How many parking spots is that? Do we know?
No, it might be 35, 39.
39.
39, that's right.
Okay, are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Yes, sir, you can come up. Come up to the podium, just give us your name and address, please. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Crean, and I live at 10 Edgar Walker Court, and I'd like to start by thanking Selectmen Advisory Recreation for your service to the town, because I know it's a lot of work and most of you aren't making a dime, so thank you. Thank you for that. There's some other neighbors that want to cover some other points, but you know, the concern that I have is that the application on October 8th, the final application that was submitted by Rec and approved by the Selectmen, said that noise concerns will be nonexistent, none. And I was on all these, you know, all these calls and everything, and a lot of people said it's too far away, it's not an issue, and you know, as a neighbor, I was like, it'd be great to have pickleball courts there, and you know, my neighbors, that abut, none of us has taken a position that we're against it. We're confused, because you know, that came out, that it was nonexistent, and then the noise study, and again, my recollection of it was requested by the neighbors on November 6th. You know, then the noise study comes back and it says, the sound predictions here and show that the proposed pickleball facility will be audible at all receivers depending on time of day in which courts are being used. So, I mean, that's incredibly confusing. So, you know, and then, you know, while I appreciate the sound study, I asked the Recreation Commission for the contract, and then I went to Carol Falvey and did a Freedom of Information request. You know, the sound study says, you know, that it was November 6th that they were going to do it. I think the goal was for December 11th. It wasn't contracted till November 20th, and the contract says it was due by January 15th, which was the day that CPC was voting. At the December 11th meeting, they said it would be that week, the following week, it was going to be the end of that week. We didn't even get the sound study till three and a half hours before the meeting with the sound consultant. And in the contract, the way I read it, and I'm not an expert, they're required under the contract to do one online meeting. So I know they spent a lot of money, but one meeting for something like this, when the first report to everybody was that it was nonexistent? And while I appreciate that the letter of the law is such that you're not required to do this for people that are beyond 300 feet, I just think the neighborly thing to do would be to involve everybody, because had we gotten involved in the process, we wouldn't be where we are now, where I, you know, we, our neighbors in Conservatory Park dropped off a letter to you today saying, you know, we are writing to request a meeting with the Select Board and Ascent Tech regarding the environmental noise study to understand the impact. I couldn't be on that, the one meeting, and Recreation Commission, they don't record their meetings, so I couldn't even see it. And I'll let other people speak for themselves, but they don't feel completely at ease by that. So where I'm at with it right now is, I'm not against the location. My feeling is, is that I really want to dig in to the mitigation, because can we develop something where it's coming from scratch, that we can build something that is a win-win for everybody? Because, you know, the thing that really troubles me, you know, by the last line of the report is, let me just pull this out. It says, and this was highlighted in what we sent over today, you know, it says, "Lastly, the sound levels will be inaudible inside any of the residences during periods when the windows are left closed." So in this report, I would, I don't know if you've read it, but you have to have a doctorate in audiology, whatever that science is of sound to even understand it. And to leave it like that, that, and just, you know, just for me not understanding that, I could be completely wrong, but where I live at 10 Edgar Walker, the number on the low end for the light plant, which I think is .49, the high end for my house, and again, when it says my house, there's a bunch of houses, not just my house, but I think is .4, and I went up to where the building is, and I walked to the light plant, and it was like 55 steps. And I'm questioning, and I think at that level, they say it's equivalent to the ambient noise in a library. So I'll let other people speak. I am not an expert on this, but I am confused, nervous, and I just, you know, I want to get to the answers. I'm not coming here to say not to do it, but I'm just saying, if you're going to vote on this in late April, and you're, you know, are we, you know, can we do something with a new project to build something? I don't know. Can you, you know, I know on Burr Road, it's kind of subterranean. If it was built down and you put dirt mounds with plants on it, maybe the sound consultant's like, you're cool, it's really good, there's nothing, and everybody wins. But, I mean, so that's my take on it. And again, I'm appreciative of all the work that was done, but you know, I don't think as a town, we should be basing what we do on, well, there's a bylaw that says it only has to be 300 feet. It's just not neighborly. That's all I'm saying. So maybe that can be worked on, but I don't think that should be the level of what we're trying to do, because I can tell you, everybody that signed into my neighborhood, nobody wants to come across as we're against it. We're just confused. So, you know, I don't know if you're going to have to come out of pocket to pay the noise consultant to come back, but I don't think, I've been involved in other things in town, and I've never seen where something like this, you get, if you don't make the meeting and it's not recorded, you're out of luck. So, but again, I'm thankful, I hope, I'm trusting in the process from here, that it's going to be done in a way that it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, everyone. My name is Hillary Tucko, and I live at 22 Hillside Terrace. I apologize that I haven't met a lot of you, had, you know, we learned about the, had we been informed about this project earlier, as mentioned in the Rec Committee notes back in June, I think I would have had the pleasure to talk to you about this. So to catch myself up on this, I did some research. I was looking at all of the proposed notes, the CHA report, and in this 2020 CHA report for Hingham, it states on the court analysis, page number 15, there is a surplus of tennis courts, but no dedicated pickleball. On page 29 of the report, it recommends converting three tennis courts at Cronin Fields to pickleball courts. The word pickleball is mentioned five times in the entire 90-page report. What page is the recommendation for 12 new pickleball courts in the CHA report the CPC presentation recommendation refers to? The word tennis is mentioned 49 times in the 90-page report. Mostly, all the recommendations to tennis courts are in reference to improving the existing tennis court surfaces. And as I stated, the report states there is a surplus of tennis courts. There is no recommendation to build new tennis courts or build new pickleball courts in the CHA report. There is, excuse me. Where did the sudden surge in demand of tennis court space become an issue in Hingham? There are multiple lawsuits being filed throughout the country regarding pickleball And pickleball courts are being shut down. In May of 2024, the town of Falmouth just recently banned outdoor pickleball at the Lawrence School after a three-year lawsuit in which the abutting neighbors were able to prove pickleball nuisance noise was detrimental to a person's health. The sound study engineers that helped the town and lost the case was Ascent Tech, the same sound engineer firm that Hingham hired for the sound study. Yesterday morning, I had a friend hit 30 to 50 pickleballs at the proposed pickleball court site, while me and my neighbor sat outdoors and listened. I am roughly 900 feet away with a hill and two structures between the proposed Traces Building site. We heard every high-pitched pop. The 12-court outdoor pickleball proposal at Bear Cove Park, Carlson Fields, is subjecting the abutters to a total exposure of up to 130,000 high-pitched pops per day, based on an average of 900 pickleball pops per hour, per game, times 12 courts, times 12 hours a day. I swear I have a full-time job. The sound is about detectability, and it's about numbers. It's not about decibels. It's exhausting for the brain and the body to process over 100,000 pops of these highly impulsive noise events. It's not a dishwasher, it's not a conversation, it's not a whisper, it's not a loud library. It's similar sound frequency to an aluminum bat hitting a ball over 100,000 times a day. We live near those baseball fields. I love that sound. I don't love hearing that sound over 100,000 times a day. We also have the batting cages. It's a noise in the soundscape requiring immediate attention by the receiver. It makes the outdoors only enjoyable for the players. A roof is the best containment for noise and lawsuits. This is going to be a constant nuisance noise. This is going to be a constant nuisance noise eight to 12 hours a day. All our other park noise, DPW, train, baseball, traffic, soccer, basketball, dogs barking, skateboard park, coyotes, Conservatory Park music, cars, trucks, the boat, they have an end. The pickleball courts will be open from 7:00 AM, dawn, to 8:00 PM, dusk, with potential of over 600 people showing up daily. In comparing the Ascentec sound studies from Falmouth dated January 2024 for an 8 to 16 outdoor court, and Hingham's Ascentec sound study for the 12 courts from December 2024, there is an overview missing from Hingham's Ascentec study that was included in the Falmouth's earlier sound study. It states, "Pickleball is unique in that it is impulsive, tonal, and repetitive, in comparison to continuous sound sources like industrial fans. It is therefore useful to consider community response to new pickleball activity sound in the context of the existing ambient soundscape." Why was that overview about pickleball noise from the same sound firm not included in Hingham's sound study? Hingham's Ascentec sound study concludes, "Abutting neighbors will hear the proposed pickleball at Carlson Fields. All 1 through 5 receptors, neighborhoods, Adams Court, Hillside Terrace, Edgar Walker Court, Isaiah Sprague Drive, and Franklin Rogers Road, that pickleball sounds will exceed the current background noise sounds by moderate to significant levels. The pickleball activity would be audible outside the residence at all study receptors." According to the Rec Committee, there have been no pickleball noise complaints at the current pickleball courts at Cronin Fields and PRS. The only complaint was back on April 11th, 2024, when a representative of Garrison and Burr Road brought to the Rec Committee's attention, pickleball players were playing as early as 6:30 AM. The Rec Committee addressed the issue and put a sign up stating pickleball cannot start until 8:00 AM. There is clearly no noise issue with pickleball at their current locations at Cronin Fields and PRS, and no tennis court space issue according to the CHA report from 2020. There will be a noise issue based on the Hingham Ascentec sound study at Carlson Fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Christine Collins, 29 Jones Street, Hingham. I'm involved in Maine, where I spend my summers, at a court that was just built two years ago on the side of a very nice golf club. And it's right across from the, where the putting practice field is, and it's also across a very narrow rural road to a residential area of nice houses that have the view of the golf course. Sound was an issue. They put up AccuNets. I have a picture, but I can't show it to you. They look like wind screens, they're black, but when you're outside of these, you cannot hear, you can't hear the sound. They, I don't know what the statistics are, and I think if someone has that situation, that we can go visit, because what, the first day I went to the pickleball courts at the country club in Maine, I had to ask someone where they were, and I was right outside, across the street from them. There is not, there was not a sound issue. So I think if, I'm giving you this because it's not hearsay, I am involved in this situation. So if we can find a place where we can all go and take the fear factor away, and, and actually not listen to what the studies are, and see for ourselves, and make a judgment based on your own facts, I think it would be a wise move. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was one more person? Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Mary Ann Bryan, I live at 75 Prospect Street, and I've been involved in the pickleball construction of the project since the very beginning. Mark knows me well from wanting to play pickleball at Cronin Field when we first started, before we were able to get Plymouth River redone and line for pickleball, because we could not play many, many times. Between the high school tennis teams in the spring, and the tennis players, and the pickleball players, courts are at a premium. This is something that builds community. We have met, many of the people who are here that are pickleball players, have met countless numbers of people we wouldn't have met if we were not playing pickleball. So it's something that's good for the town. I understand people are afraid of the noise issue that they have heard in other towns, but when we've designed this and worked together with Recreation, we are twice as far away from any residence as was recommended. So instead of 400 feet, we're 900 feet. The people who are living next to the courts at Plymouth River came out and said, 150 feet, it wasn't an issue. So I really wish that people would give this a chance. We have sound screens that Chrissy mentioned already going up. This is a project that is needed in town, and that will only help to make us a better place. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
Jim Costello, 14 Adams Court, I'm R1 on the sound study. I do appreciate, I did attend the CPC meetings, the Rec Committee meetings, so I appreciate all, everyone's hard work and, and the effort they'd put into this. I do have concerns about the noise being R1 in the sound study, but something else I just wanted to bring up as well, because the gentleman here asked about the traffic. I was one of the ones questioning the traffic during those meetings. So Adams Court, it's a private one-way road, it's Lincoln Hill condominiums, so it's, you enter off of West Street and you exit off of a shared access road, Bear Cove Park Drive by, by the DPW. When the light plant was being built, we had very large, big concerns about traffic and cut-through. Being a private road, we're not maintained at all by the town, and there were a lot of promises, and I think they really weren't met. So traffic is a concern with folks cutting through to go into the existing playing fields. I know a lot of people say that when I stop them, that their GPS told them to come through here, so what's going to stop them from coming through here to go to the pickleball courts? From everything I heard on the CPC meetings, it's, it's obviously a community, it's a well-organized community amongst themselves. I'm just very concerned about the size of these courts, if there's 12 of them, that's what's needed to have tournaments. I asked the question, were there going to be any organized tournaments here? And Mark said that the, you know, the Rec Commission wasn't planning to organize any tournaments, but what's to stop the pickleball community amongst themselves? There was an ambassador from Regional Pickleball on the call advocating for these pickleball courts. Some of the folks from the town talked about how they go to Braintree and other towns to play pickleball, so what's to stop all these people from coming into the town to play on these courts, especially since there's 12 of them? What's to stop them from organizing tournaments amongst themselves, even if it's not an official Town of Hingham or Rec Commission, you know, tournament? The graphic with the 12 courts there, it even referenced in there, green space for tents for events. These were all part of my big concerns about the traffic cutting through, there's a, you know, there's a parking lot for 39 spaces. I just don't think enough is also being, and I do, I do understand that you said this is, I guess this was now a preliminary design, that things could change. I just think it's way too big. Besides the noise, it's too big, it's inviting of tournaments, it's inviting a lot of traffic, you know, cutting through our community, you know, added traffic on top of it. I know in the grand scheme of things, if you're thinking of as a town, the senior centers are now planning to go down there. I mean, you know, that's the concern about the traffic, you know, that's, that's the point we were making. So it's not about how many people today drive to Plymouth River School or drive to Cronin Field, it's just that they don't drive through my private street, you know, and come through in a narrow road where there's children out at high rates of speed like they do every single day to get to the light plant, to get to the skateboard park, to get to the dog park. It's one way, they cut through the wrong way coming back out, even though there's Do Not Enter signs that the town did put up when the light plant was built. On a daily basis, they speed through the wrong way on the way out, so this is just going to add to all of that. And especially when you have 12 courts, I think they need 10 or 12 to officially have pickleball tournaments. It's on the graphic that there's green space for tents and events, so that's going to happen, that's the reality. Even if it's not an official, you know, Rec Commission sanctioned event, it's going to happen because they'll organize it amongst themselves. So I would also just like to make sure that that's taken into consideration too, and if there is truly going to be options to reduce the scale of this, or as the design goes through, when they look at the wetlands and whatnot, I just want the abutters, the neighbors, taken into consideration, and the traffic is a huge concern for me besides the noise. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And it sounds like we've got a traffic issue to address regardless of, of this project. Thank you. Someone online with a hand raised? Yes. If you could identify yourself.
Hi, I'm not sure if I'm the person you want to ask to identify. Hi, I'm Melissa Robin, and I'm a former 25-year resident of Hingham. I've since moved to Hall, but I know many of you in that room. And a lot of you also know me as the face of pickleball. I learned how to play with Hingham's Recreation Program probably about six years ago. Hingham proudly has one of the best recreation programs on the South Shore. I'm also an ambassador for USA Pickleball, and in this volunteer role that I have, I am fortunate to see all of the pickleball growth and activities, not only in Massachusetts, but across the US. And I specifically work with towns and communities on the South Shore to help them develop courts. And I come to this role not only with my love of pickleball, but also a multi-decade career in public planning, design and construction. I'd like to start off by just clarifying the Falmouth project that one of the meeting participants talked about in that lawsuit. The closest home in the Falmouth project to Lawrence School is 40 feet, 40 feet. The citizen petition that is underway in Falmouth is to have courts be at least 600 feet from residences. Now let's put that in context to what we've heard tonight, we're looking at residences that are 700 to 900 feet away, surrounded by mature-growth forest that is frankly better than any aftermarket screen you can have. You know, the trees in that vicinity are hundreds and hundreds of years old. I started the pickleball planning process with the community in 2020 with Mark Thorell and many others, and the Weston and Sampson report actually identified that there were 28 tennis courts in town, and at the time, there were only the lined courts at Cronin Field. 28 tennis courts. Now tennis has been a popular sport for many decades, and pickleball has just grown exponentially. All of you have probably heard how they say pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. The ask of 12 courts is not any different than any other towns of this size on the South Shore. Duxbury, which is a pretty similar town to Hingham, has that many courts, and they're planning for more. So I'd like to just assure you all that this has been a process that involved many, many people for many years, looking at sites all over town. It was definitely an oversight not to invite abutters beyond 300 feet, and I think everybody has embraced that and invited the residences from Hillside Terrace, Adams Court, and Conservatory Park as part of the process. But, you know, as somebody said, we had Nancy McDonald, she's the resident of High Street that has the White Colonial House right on the corner there. Her home office is 160 feet. She says she works there full-time with the windows open, and it's never been a bother having those six courts there. Her outside patio is 140 feet. So I, I think it's really important to have the facts at hand on the distances, and I firmly believe that the site that's being proposed is a very good one, and as the process unfolds, we will look into traffic, other issues that need to be addressed. But again, this is, we're only at a preliminary phase here with the number of courts identified and the site, and it's, it makes a lot of sense. You're expanding an existing athletic area of the town to now serve more than the kids. You're going to serve parents, grandparents, and there's no other sport in America where a 75-year-old grandparent can beat their 22-year-old kid at a sport. This is going to build community, not detract. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I think, I think that's it for public comment, I'm, I'm not seeing anyone else. What, is that a hand raised over there?
No.
No, no, that's a cursor. So at this point, just to be clear, this is a vote whether or not to proceed with the CPC recommendation. Separately, this board will be voting on a Warren article for the pickleball courts. And then I think AdCom is going to, as you said, have its own hearing on this. So I hear the, the concerns of neighbors. I'm also aware that there is a process, regardless of what, what proceeds with these votes, in terms of getting permits from appropriate boards. I know there'll be separate hearings with the Conservation Commission, and I believe the Planning Department will also be involved. I'm comfortable moving forward with the CPC part of this process. Melissa?
Can I just ask you a procedural question? If we recommend favorable action, but then something gets changed or moved with the pickleball courts, does that negatively impact the other projects?
So in other words, if, if one of the sub-items in Article M gets affected, does that affect the entire Article M?
Correct.
Julie, I don't think so.
At town meeting, I don't know if you can hear me on the mic.
Want to just go to the podiums?
Where that mic works.
At town meeting, the way the moderator handles the article, and where committees, like the Advisory Committee and Select Board handle it, is that you can, you vote, you can vote individually on pieces of the, of that article. And in the past, even CPC members have differed on a vote for an individual piece of it. So at, at town meeting, the moderator would ask for a hold on a piece of that article, and then maybe vote the rest of, all the other pieces of the article, and then you could have a discussion and a whatever vote for that piece of it, but you can break it up. It's not all or nothing.
Sure. Okay.
So a vote on Article M, and then issues in subparts would not jeopardize the entire article?
No.
Right. Let me ask Julie while, while you're there, did, did CPC consider funding only the, the scoping out of the project as opposed to design and then building? In other words, splitting it in two so that you'd see what the design looked like, and then you'd have a better sense of what the cost would be, and also you'd have perhaps a better opportunity for the neighbors to participate in the, in that planning process?
No, we didn't. We just took the, we looked at the plan as a whole and voted on that as a whole, as presented.
Was that considered and, and rejected, or just not considered?
Any deviation from that plan was not considered.
Got it. Got it.
Now, I will note that if whatever happens during this process, the money set aside to go towards the pickleball from community preservation, if, if this project doesn't come to pass, then that money just stays in the community preservation general fund and that would be rolled into next, to spend next year or in future years. So it doesn't get, you know, it doesn't get wasted, it's just not used.
It's just deferred for a year.
Yeah. Or deferred for two years or five or whatever. It would just go back into the general fund. Yeah.
So for example, if as a result of conservation concerns, the project shrinks and there's less cost in constructing it, those funds would then be available in future years for...
Well, I don't think so. I think town meeting appropriated, would appropriate a certain dollar amount, the 40% of the project cost. But it, it represents the 40%, but it's the 768 or whatever that dollar amount is that would go towards that. And then so it would end up, what if the project got scaled back to 10 courts or eight or whatever, it costs less, then I think that the community preservation piece would be more than, end up being more than 40% of the project cost. Because town meeting would vote to appropriate a certain dollar amount. Unless the CPC before town meeting happened this year met and changed its recommendation. But that seems ahead of schedule for everything else that happens.
I mean, as far as I know, there's been no Conservation Commission hearing on this. So that, we don't know how, what restrictions would, would result.
Well, it's like...
I'm sorry, I just, I just wanted to add that, because I just want to go back to CPC of a couple of years ago, when we came, when the Rec Commission came forward with the request for the feasibility study and design. So it was a preliminary design, so it was well-known by CPC that we were going this route, that we were looking for a cost estimate with the feasibility study, so that we could go to that next step. So that the town would make the decision, if they wanted to move forward, they'd be moving forward with the design and construction. To go for money for design and then get a design and have the town, which is expensive, and have the town decide they don't want to build it, would not be the best use of funds from CPC or the town. So this is the reason the Recreation Commission went this direction. In the case of fewer courts and less money, the money would go back to the town. We have always done that, even with CPC projects.
Well, from the other article. But the appropriation for town meeting under the community preservation article would just be that set dollar amount.
Right, correct.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't go back into the community preservation.
Right, it would go back to the town.
Got it.
It would just be more than 40% if the rest of the project cost went down.
From my perspective, there's some unanswered questions here. And I don't think the Select Board Office has responded to the letter, it was just received today, but the residents requesting that meeting. So I'd feel more comfortable if we went down that route before we voted.
Before we voted on the CPC recommendation. Bill?
I mean, I'm comfortable with every, every...
You have a...
Sorry?
You're recusing yourself on this.
On the pickleball court one, yes. I'm voting in favor of the balance of the CPC articles.
Got it.
But I would just ask Liz, if we were to hold another hearing, what would that entail? I mean, they want to, didn't we just go over the sound study?
That, it was requested to have a meeting with the sound study consultant.
Okay.
So Tom, I'll, I'll ask you this question. If we were to vote favorable with respect to the CPC motion, but then hold off on Article CC, which is the warrant article itself, what impact would that have on this?
I think that would be an efficient way of doing this. The other way to do it would be what Julia said has happened in the past, that town meeting, just break out each vote for each of the six components of the article. Or you could, if you're confident in where everyone's supporting everything else, you could just exempt that one from the vote and then take a second vote for that one, or hold off on it until the next meeting.
So I guess what I'm asking is, are we preserving our rights, if you will, if we only held back on Article CC? Or would we, would we need to also hold back on these, on the part of Article M that deals with the pickleball courts?
No, I think you can, I think you're going to hold off on Article M, the pickleball courts component, and come back at a future meeting.
Got it. Okay.
Or you could just vote on the CPC article as a whole later, after you get more information. Because you already heard all the, all the information for the rest of the article.
Like Liz said, especially if it's not going to change the allocations otherwise.
Okay. So given that, I think then we will, since Bill is recusing himself, it's just the two of us voting on this. And in order to get a majority, I think we're going to hold off on, on the vote on Article M for the community preservation. We're not going to split it up.
Okay.
So we will just hold off on that, which means the next item which we have was Article CC, we're also going to hold off on that as well.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all the people who have participated in the process for the Community Preservation Committee, including town staff and the Rec Commission and people who have weighed in on, on the applications. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there is not going to be a motion on Article M here. Does AdCom want to adjourn at this point?
Yes. Can we please recess?
Uh, recess?
And we will be reconvening upstairs.
On the third floor?
On the third floor. And we will be having an update from the Center for Active Living Building Study Committee, well worth your time and interest, if you would like to join us.
Is that the next item on your agenda?
It is the very next item on our agenda, yes.
I know Tom wants to participate there.
They can start without me, but we will, we won't be long for the rest of it.
Take a long break if you can. Okay. Okay, so we're not going to move on.
Recording stopped.
I am not going to stop so we can keep going. Okay. We're going to move on to Article CC, which is the Recreation Commission's new pickleball courts. And my understanding is, we've heard enough to know that we're going to hold off on a vote on that. We're now going to move on to Article FF, which is the digitation of town, Hingham Municipal Government records. Mr. Mayo?
Sure. So this is a, this is an important, I think, an important project. I've been wanting to start this for the near decade that I've been here. And what it will do is it allows us to scan and digitize public records that the town maintains in all of our different departments. This project, the proposal, starts with one of our smallest departments in the historic department. They have, I don't know, a few thousand records that we would, some are very old, some are newer, but they're regularly coming in for applications and projects. And I think from my perspective, it would be helpful to digitize those records, make them readily available to staff and the, and the general public. It would also allow us to protect those records from catastrophes such as flood and fire, and backs them up forever.
Right. So Tom, what's the estimated cost?
About $40,000. That would be digitizing all of the records in the historic department and allowing for software and retrieval systems for the, for the staff and the public.
So who would be staffing the project? In other words, doing the digitization?
A consultant. That's what the $40,000 would pay for.
So we would not need
No.
An assistant town administrator to do it? Okay.
Yeah, no, there is no, I mean, I'll, I'll speak with the, the staff will, you know, take the boxes and hand them off.
Right.
But there's no, there's very little, no staff work required.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
So in, in theory, I think this is a great idea. Anything moving towards the 20th century, let alone 21st or future. My concerns with this are just capacity workload. I think everyone has a very full plate already. Would this, so I know you, you mentioned historic records, so is that Heidi and the historic?
So it's funny you say it like that, Liz. One of the reasons I chose historic as our first project was with the recent retirement of Andrea Young and Heidi Galls coming in, we took that opportunity at that turnover to organize all of the files already in that department. They're already boxed and organized.
Okay.
That would not be the case with every department everywhere, which is a much bigger project. So I was hoping to bite off a small, bite-sized chunk that we can begin with, get our, dip our toe in the digitization waters, get the software, get familiar with it, see how it works at relatively low risk and, and not, importantly, not require staff time along the way.
Okay. Is there an annual license fee associated with the software?
There is. It's small. I believe it's like $100 or something for a project like this. It's, it's a relatively inconsequential annual amount.
Okay. I will be transparent. I, I'm not against this at all, but this is not a priority for me.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, so how long is this going to take, Tom? Like, I know you said you're going to start with 40 grand and do historic, but what's the, what's the long-term plan here?
I'm checking my, my cheat sheet here to see if I was given that info. I don't have a, I don't have a, jobs can usually be completed in one and a half to two months. So from the minute the boxes, from the day the boxes are taken out of Town Hall, we'd have them back in one and a half to two months.
Well, what I'm saying is, how long is it going to take to do all the Town Hall records? Like, starting with historic, is this going to be like a 10-year, you know, a 10-year journey? We're going to spend 40 grand a year?
Well, I think what, so again, I'd pick in the smallest department to start with. Once we get into the clerk's office and the building department, the planning department, there's a lot of records in those departments that will, that will, those projects are much bigger, will be more costly and will take longer. I'm recommending that we start small and get a sense of it. Is this an investment that we feel is worthwhile? Again, at relatively low risk.
Okay.
Tom, are there many vendors who do this?
We've spoken with two.
Okay.
There's, there's at least three that I'm aware of, including those two and one other.
And are you seeing our neighboring towns going along a similar path?
Yes, many towns do this. I don't have any statistics for you. I can tell you of the community I was in before I came here, we had just finished the project town-wide. That was a, to your point, Bill, they, we bid off the, the whole of it in one chunk and we did it over a two-year period. So it's a long effort, a big effort. And that was for a town half the size of Hingham. So there's a lot of records here. It would be a very big effort to, to take this on as a town-wide project.
And once the records are digitized, would residents be able to access it online or...
They would.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
Any member of the public, comments or questions? Seeing none. I think if we only do historic digitization, that would add value. And I think it's, it's, I agree, it's, it's not on, on my top 10 list of priorities, but it's also, I'm not sure it will ever be, which doesn't mean it shouldn't, it shouldn't be done. And...
For the record, Joe, it's not in my top, it's not in my top priority list either.
I, I know.
It's just a project.
Right.
At some point, we gotta, if we're going to do it, we should do it.
And I assure you that we will all be kicking ourselves if we don't do this and there's something that happens at Town Hall and we lose the records. And of all the records to lose, the historic ones are the ones that I would not want to lose. So I am, I'm going to, I'm in favor of this.
Joe, if I could, I mean, I agree with you. I just, I'm worried about the scope and the, the price to do all of Town Hall. And I mean, we're, we're in compliance with the rec, with the public records law, correct?
Yes. So this, this is not a, to bring, go in compliance.
It suggests to do more.
It's to make the records more accessible to, to the residents and for preservation.
Because the clerk's office has a ton of records. I mean, and Carol has, you know, Carol has a book of everybody, I think.
In total, Bill?
Yeah, there's a lot of records there. I mean, that's going to, so I'm just thinking about the scope and the overall cost after we do this, but, okay.
In total, town-wide, I would estimate you're looking at over a million dollars in total.
Right, right.
To do all of the town records everywhere. But to your point, you know, maybe you do it over a 10-year window. Maybe you do it over a long window and you do little bits at a time. And try to minimize the, the annual impact any given year.
But I, I don't view this as a commitment to go beyond this, this particular project. I, I think you've picked a department that is sufficiently isolated, if you will, that it would stand on its own merits. And I also suspect that the technology continues to advance and that quite frankly, in probably five years, a company like Google would just come in and do it for free. So, you know, I, again, I think it's worth it. It's not in my top 10, but I see the merits in it. But I defer to my fellow members of the Select Board. So is anyone prepared to make a motion on Article FF?
I don't have a vote list tonight, but I can make this motion. So I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article FF.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We move then to...
Can I just make a comment? Can we look at if there's grants available, since this is for historic?
So, so thank you for saying that. I meant to say it when I spoke. There will be grants available for the Board of Health records when we get to that rec, when we get to that department. They're not ready for this level of effort yet with their records, but there will be grants for Board of Health. And they likely would be for, you know, perhaps a library, you know, that kind of thing. Yeah, you're absolutely right, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to Article W, Transfer from the Capital Project Cost and Debt Service Stabilization Fund. Michelle and Tom?
So this is, the town has four stabilization funds, and this is the one that we created in November of 2022, when we set aside $7 million to offset the tax impact of the foster school and public safety facility projects.
Yes.
So let me just show you, we were updating the debt service schedule today. We had planned originally to use this fund over the four-year window of FY '25, '26, '27 and '28. So this graph, I'll zoom in a little bit. I'll just go to the top. Right here is FY '25, the year that we're in. So last year, we approved using a million dollars of this fund to offset the tax impact. In this chart, you can see the blue is the period, is the piece of taxes that, I'm sorry, yeah, of taxes for our excluded debt projects that will still come from people's tax bills. And the green is the proposed use of this Stables Eastern Fund to kind of cut off the steep, the peak of it. You also see the smaller pink stabilization fund, which is the next article. But we're proposing in FY '26 to use $2.2 million, again, to kind of keep that increase, you know, as smooth as possible.
I've seen a similar presentation in past years, so this is clear. I've got no questions. Liz?
Can you just clarify, Michelle, what is the balance of the stabilization fund?
Sure. So we started with $7 million a couple of years ago. We've spent $1 million so far, so there's $6 million left. But we have been earning interest on those funds. I was just trying to check into that today. So I have a couple of questions about that piece, but we will be able to use that interest in future years to help, you know, offset the tax impact further.
Great.
So the interest accrues to this, to the fund?
It stays in the stabilization fund, yes.
Great. Yes, I, this, thank you. This is what we planned, right?
Yeah, exactly.
This was the plan.
Yes. Bill, any questions?
It might actually work.
No, this is, I agree, this is, but Liz, this is the plan.
Yes. Okay. Any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article W.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We move to Article G.
So staying on that theme, Article G was kind of our original stabilization fund. It was kind of fed with bond premiums from school debt-excluded projects in the past. That money has to be used to offset the interest payments on those school debt-excluded projects. So that's been a smaller amount, $178,000, kind of steady for the last several years. But, so that's the recommendation for FY '26 here. You'll notice though, that I have in FY '29 over here, a bigger pink bump.
Yes.
And that's because we have earned about $400,000 in interest in this fund. We're looking at, you know, right now with the plan, using a We're looking at, you know, right now with the plan, using a big chunk of that, $300,000 in FY '29 and a little bit in FY '30, again, just to kind of smooth stuff out, to the extent that the town may consider other debt exclusions in the near future, like the Center for Active Living, possibly Rufe's. All of this will kind of help, again, mitigate those impacts. So each year that goes along, especially in this high interest rate environment, it's helping us, you know, expand the use of these funds.
So I should have asked this before, with both the green and the pink, is that based on interest that we currently have or is it projected, does it include projected future interest earnings?
It's only based on, it's based on all of the debt that the town has issued to date and some projections for our notes, like the bands continuing in the future. It does not include authorized but unissued projects. For example, we have...
That's, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, the amount of money that we have available on the, in the fund includes interest earned?
Oh, oh, correct, to, interest earned to date.
So this does not include future interests that will be earned?
Correct.
So those numbers will slightly, will likely be higher than what we're seeing?
Yes.
Got it. That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions? I'm prepared to take a motion, I'm sorry, any member of the public? Comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion on Article G.
I will make a motion...
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article G.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Move to the Fiscal Year '26 Departmental Budget Requests, and we have debt service.
Sure. So that's again related to just what we are talking about.
Yep.
I forwarded to the board, if you had a chance to look, it was late last night, an updated debt service schedule. Those numbers are now reflected in our ClearGov system. The debt schedule goes through, let me just go down. The debt schedule that I sent you has all of the funds. What you see right now in this part of ClearGov is just the general fund projects because things like the country club, the water system, sewer, CPC, as Julie just mentioned, those funds all pay their portions of their borrowed projects. In the general fund debt service budget, we budget the gross amount. The town is going to pay this full amount in debt service. Not all of it will be raised from taxes, as we just saw with the stabilization funds.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you, Michelle.
Let's move to general insurance.
All right. In the last budget tonight, this is sort of a placeholder for now. This is the budget for the property liability, other general insurance for all of the town's property, vehicles, et cetera. Again, with this one, there are certain departments, like we just mentioned, the enterprise funds, they do pay their piece of the overall insurance budget. We are doing an analysis right now, kind of looking at our coverage, our claim history, et cetera. And I've shared some information with the board, so we'll just want to talk about that and whether we need to make any adjustments going forward. We did see a large increase in this budget for FY '25 because of the new Foster School coming online and the Public Safety Facility coming online soon. So look forward to talking with you more about that. But for now, we're just trying to budget conservatively a 10% increase and we'll, you know, get some more specifics in the next month.
Are we going to shop this?
That is the plan.
Great.
Yes.
Bill, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Liz?
Just to, to confirm, so the 10% obviously is an estimate, but Foster School and the Public Safety Facility are included in that?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions.
Okay, we now move to appointments and/or reappointments. I believe we have one for this evening.
I would like to make a recommendation. I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Bellows to the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. Any member of the public have a comment or items? None on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?